Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evans School District 6. Today is the 23rd day of January 2023. The meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the republic of America. I pledge allegiance to the President of the Department of Commerce, the Secretary of Transit, the Director of Transportation, the Director of the Department of Agriculture, 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 And so we want to recognize or just make sure that everyone knows that those people that are being nominated for those awards, they stand out among a great group of teachers and staff. And so we're very excited for the event on Thursday night. And those are all the announcements that I have tonight. And we are now to an approval of the agenda and need a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education... I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley. Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Right, we're now to our board member comments and reports. And Ms. Sullivan, we'll lead off with you tonight if you're available, and hopefully Mr. Norwood will be joining us shortly.
Well, I'm short on spring. I'm still staying at home and focusing on my rehabilitation, and I've had a few setbacks. So thank you for letting me zoom in tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Mash.
Yeah, so I've been able to attend a few different events. First of all, a few of us were able to go to Denver to witness the swearing-in of the new state board members, and I'm just very proud to have one of our own, Rhonda Solis, being sworn into that position. And it looks like the board has increased from seven members to nine members, I believe. So they've got a lot of great work ahead of them, and that was neat. I've been to a number of basketball games. I'm impressed with the students of District 6 with their sportsmanship and their athletic ability. And I got to go to my first basketball game in the new Greeley West. I know there was a basketball season last year, but it is just great to see that beautiful building full of people and so much school spirit. Also, at Greeley West, got to attend the much anticipated Matilda, three years in the making almost, but those students did such a wonderful job. And it was really special to see students from multiple different schools because they had been middle schoolers when they tried out and were still able to maintain those roles. So it was just a really great collaborative effort, and those students did a great job. Also, got to attend the All-City Combined League Choir, where students from schools all around Northern Colorado try out to be in this choir. There were 260 students, 500 tried out, so great honor for those students. We had students from Frontier, Central, West, Union Colony, and University High Schools participate. And what was so amazing, they sounded just beautiful, angelic, all these voices raised together. But the two guest professors who worked with the students just went on and on about the creativity, the openness, just the amazing talents of our students, but what a joy they were to work with. And they gave credit to the students and they gave credit to the educators, and just were cheerleaders for public education and especially for arts in the school. So our students represent us well wherever they go, and some of these people that flew in to work with them, you know, they're taking that pride far and wide. So that was really beautiful.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Bentley.
Better? I didn't think it was working earlier. Yeah, I didn't get a lot of time to do much between the last board meetings and this one. I was pretty busy with working with my kids. But I did want to mention, I didn't get to go to McAuliffe. Thank you guys for allowing me to miss that. I had a real important work meeting. But we did get to open the gifts from the kids, the cards, and the thought and the time and the effort they put into it was definitely appreciated, touching, brought tears to my eyes. And there's a couple of them, I want them to know that they asked me to write them back, so I just want to make sure they know I will get around to writing you guys back. Other than that, it was great to hear from the Student Council Representatives for the calendar options that they've been working through. And just glad to get going, kind of like I said, in the work session, back on our more normal Board of Education tours and agendas. This spring season seems to be where we get to do a lot of fun things. So yeah, excited for the next upcoming months. Stay busy.
Dr. Campos Spitsi.
Yeah, my kids and I got to all sit and read every single one of those McAuliffe cards from all grade levels, and they were super enjoyable. The artwork was really fun, too. I especially enjoyed one, there was a student named Evanya who wrote me a note in perfect Spanish, and it just really touched my heart. This month, aside from the wonderful baskets that we got from the students from McAuliffe, I also... Our whole school board got recognized by the City of Evans, the City Council. They proclaimed January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month, and I was honored to be able to receive that proclamation for the group. And that was great. Evans is actually where I've worked for the last nine years, so those families are very close to my heart. And then along with a lot of the rest of us, I also got to enjoy the Greeley West Matilda performance. I think President Matthews really built it up with the three years of moving props from one school to another school, and these kids getting recruited or picked for their roles when they were in middle school and now they're in high school. It was all wonderful, and they did such a great job. It was truly enjoyable, everything from the performances, but also the intermission. There was great charcuterie and chocolate cake that we enjoyed. Yeah, and yeah, I think, as well as Kyle Bentley here, looking forward to tackling this new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsi. Mr. Norwood, welcome.
Good to be here. Life happens sometimes, and you know, when you don't expect things, it's one of those things that you kind of have to start expecting things. But I do, too, want to say I really enjoyed the visit to McAuliffe last week. Thank you to the schools, the students, the principals that gave us the baskets for school board appreciation. It was so much fun, and my son kept hitting my bobblehead, say every time he'd ask me a question, I would answer yes. So thank you to everybody. And again, I apologize for being late, but as I say, life happens sometimes, but hopefully we got things under control. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Vice President Pappas.
Thank you. Like others, I enjoyed the school visit to McAuliffe. And as Mr. Norwood stated, we really do appreciate the staff and the administration for making that possible, and the student presentations telling us why they enjoyed being at a STEM school were really powerful as well. So I think we all enjoyed those. I was able to participate in the Immigrant Refugee Collaboration Meeting last week. And just a reminder to people that the Immigrant Refugee Collaboration Center is composed of organizations across Northern Colorado, but the support that our students and families are given, I just want to recognize all of those people, Sunrise, Lutheran Family Services, and just the appreciation of what that means for our families. And then additionally, YouthNet last week. YouthNet is an organization that meets at the Rodarte Center once a month. We were given a presentation by North Colorado Alliance, and just a reminder again of all the multiple resources and supports that our students and families have access to, including community health workers, access to health insurance, behavioral health connections, care management, and then also just the transition from hospital to in-housing support. The District 6 Family Center also gave a presentation at YouthNet, and I think this is really important for us to remember and know. Because of MLO dollars, we were able to hire parent family advocates that are housed at schools. And one of the outcomes of having people at schools and interacting with our families was the fact that we have now identified over 600 homeless students in our district, which is a pretty incredible increase. So while I think that those students were out there, I think the fact that we now have supports for them and our family parent advocates is pretty important and important for us to remember that that is because of the MLO dollars. And then, of course, I know that some of you were there as well, but on Friday night, Greeley Central had their first Hall of Fame inaugural ceremony that recognized a basketball team from 1922 and then nine other individuals that have made a difference in the life of Greeley Central High School. It was a really great, great recognition for people. There were so many former employees and students that participated in that. So a big thank you to the Greeley Central staff and students. We were treated like royalty by the students. The avid students were particularly involved with the night. And then finally, the Council of Student Reps hosted their movie night on Saturday night, and pretty exciting, was my first time actually seeing the theater at Greeley West. And they showed... There might talk about it, I'm sorry if I'm taking this, but they showed the movie Cars, and I was there for a while just to see a lot of families come in and be so excited to see a movie, have snacks, play games. So big thank you to the Council of Student Reps, you did a great job. So yeah, there's just been a lot going on, and mostly I just wanted us to all remember that our community has so many supports and resources for our families. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Pappas. And I don't have too much to add, but did appreciate the Matilda show. Was able to go last weekend, and fantastic show. I think what I appreciated, though, is how many teachers and how many administrators came out to support our kids. I think I saw just about all of the teachers at Greeley West, but then also middle school teachers and even some Greeley Central teachers that came to see the show. And so we appreciate all the support, and I know those kids appreciated all the support for that show. Also, went to the game with Greeley Central and Greeley West basketball game, and congrats to Greeley Central, both the boys and the girls team, for pulling out the victory in that one, victories in that one. And so I think that's all that we have tonight. So Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report, please?
Yes, Director Sullivan has requested, if she can say one additional thing.
Oh, sure. Ms. Sullivan.
Yeah, hello. So I meant to say this at the last meeting, but I just want to give recognition to Mr. Bob Norwood. So back in November, I'm sorry, December, he was in a restaurant, and there was a lady who collapsed, and he actually saved her life with CPR, and we have yet to acknowledge him. And this woman was able to, you know, have the holidays with her family and continue living. So I want to give him a huge shout out, because I'm not quite sure how I would have responded in a situation such as the one I heard he was in. So thank you, Mr. Norwood. I appreciate that you have your skills down for CPR. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for bringing that up. And again, thank you, Mr. Norwood. I'm sure there are a number of people who are very appreciative that you were on the spot and able to perform in the way that you did that night, and so...
I'm glad I renewed my certificate, and I'm glad Mr. Bentley was there for support, because you don't know what it's like when somebody dies in your arms and you have to bring it back. So I'm glad I was there.
Yeah, we are, too. Thank you. Next up, we have some special items, and we have a number of these tonight. And oh, sorry, work session report. Ms. Lemon.
Thank you. The work session began with an overview of upcoming events. The board received an overview of proposed calendar options for the 2023-2024 school year and heard feedback from members of the Council of Student Representatives. Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsler provided an update on budget year revisions, and the meeting ended with a debrief from board members.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Now we have those special items, and first among those is our Ark of Weld County Bully Prevention Poster Contest, something that we get to enjoy every year. Dr. Pilch, and I'll give it to you to introduce.
Thank you, President Matthews. As Ms. Pappas indicated, we are so fortunate to have so many community partners who support our families and our students here in the Greeley-Evan School District 6. I'm excited to introduce to you Mr. Tom Gribble and our guests from Ark of Weld County. I'll let you all take it away and share some good, exciting news with us, please.
President Matthews, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here tonight with our partner from the Ark of Weld County to announce the winner of the Ninth Annual Bully Prevention Poster Contest. That's right, for the past nine Octobers, we have collaborated with the Ark of Weld County to create this contest to honor National Bully Prevention Month. There were over 90 posters submitted, and to mention the Council of Student Representatives, they're everywhere, right? Including, they're the ones who take our 90 posters and narrow them down to the top 12, and the calendar you're looking at is the top 12. From there, our winners are selected from the staff of the Ark of Weld County. And before I pass this over to Letitia and Ryan, I want to recognize a couple folks. Lauren Maxey, who I think is helping us gather our winners, but she managed nearly the entire process, the online submissions, organizing the posters for judging, ordering the calendars, getting the winners from the other room, everything. Lauren's everywhere here. Again, the Council of Student Representatives for helping us to narrow the winners down, all the teachers and students for participating, and then of course, the Ark of Weld County and the partnership and leadership to make this contest possible. So now I'd like to turn it over to Letitia and Ryan from the Ark to say a few words and announce the winners.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Akers. I'm the Office Assistant and Community Ambassador for the Ark of Weld County. We are so proud that this is our ninth year offering the Bully Prevention Poster Contest. This poster contest takes place in October, which is National Bully Prevention Month. This has been a powerful collaboration with schools, and we receive outstanding submissions from a variety of grade levels every year. A little bit about the Ark of Weld County. We are an advocacy org nation focused on protecting the rights of individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. I would like to introduce you to Letitia.
Good evening. I'm Letitia Arguelo, and thank you so much for having us here this evening. I am honored to present to you all our 2022 Bully Prevention Poster Contest winners. So in first place, I would love to welcome up Kamila Figora from the District 6 Online Academy. Congratulations. And if you'll hang with us, we'll take a picture as soon as we get everyone up here. In second place, we have Hector Rascón from Billy Martinez Elementary School. And our third place winner is Jordan Moreno from Ann K. Hyman Elementary School. Thank you for this powerful collaboration. We really appreciate all of these amazing artistic submissions we get to look through every year.
Thank you for being here tonight. And before we get a picture, I just want to check and make sure we don't have any comments from our board members or questions from our board members. And I do think we have one, at least, from Ms. Pappas.
I just want to thank you so much for these calendars. Every year, I look forward to getting this, and it's really exciting to see all the artwork and the messages about anti-bullying, and congratulations to all of you. This is pretty awesome. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to our three winners, to all of those chosen to be in the calendar and for all of those that made submissions, and we do appreciate this calendar that's presented to us every year. Next on our agenda tonight is our GC-H... Next on our agenda tonight is our GCHS Best Buddies Program. And Dr. Pilch, again, I'll, I'll give it to you to introduce this.
Thank you, President Matthews. Mr. Tommy Medina and some of his colleagues, I think from Greeley Central High School, are here tonight to talk about the Best Buddies Program, and we thought this would be an ideal time for you, Tommy, to come forward and share more information with our Board of Education and with our community. Or whomever would like to start.
He's graciously gonna let me talk first. Good evening to you all. Thank you so much for having us this evening. My name is Nikki Quinby Torres. I'm a teacher in District Six for fourteen years. The last five have been at Greeley Central, and I'm honored to be here tonight, along with Ms. Mary Goffney, to speak on behalf of an amazing club at our school, which is Best Buddies. Best Buddies is an international club that really encapsulates what we believe as a district, that through our diversity, we are made stronger, and it should be celebrated. And we are so fortunate to get to work with a group of amazing movers and shakers, world changers, if you will, with these students. So tonight, to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing and give you an opportunity to join us, Ms. Mary Goffney is gonna highlight a little bit more about our club, and then you're gonna hear from our amazing students. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Mary Goffney, and I've been teaching at Greeley Central for four years, and I've been in the district for eight years. I've been Best Buddies teacher advocate for four years as well, and I work in the IFL program at the school, which is our most significant needs students. And what is Best Buddies? It's where we match general education students in one-on-one friendships with peers who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our students look forward to the bi-monthly gatherings in our room, where we play games, dance, do art projects, have pizza parties, and take on fun challenges such as making a parade float, hosting a room for trick-or-treat in the castle, and this year even hosting Ark of Weld County's Film Festival. Four of my students are even Best Buddies officers with their Gen Ed peers. My purpose for being here tonight is to share what our students are capable of, how they should never be underestimated, and how we're working toward inclusion in all aspects of their lives. That being said, we're proud to host the Twelfth Annual Ark of Weld County Film Festival, and for more about that is our president, Tommy Medina.
Hi. So I am the chapter president of Best Buddies at Greeley Central High School. So I've been with Buddies all, of, of, all my high school career right, as of right now. I got in it because of one teacher, Sadley, she hadn't moved, but her name was Megan Schultz. She was best. She was advisor before Ms. Quinby and Goffney took over. She got me into it because I wanted to try something new, and this is something new, and I really enjoy it. This program means a lot to me. I'm a very social advocate just to spread awareness of our inclusion, and a lot of people appreciate that, especially the Best Buddies in Colorado, since it's international, but there's also Best Buddies in the States. And so, fun fact, recently, the Best Buddies nominated me for Best Buddies Champion of the Year in November, and so I got to go down to Denver and participate, and it was very fun. I was very honorable to, to be part of that. I also had community members who support inclusions, who donated for that fundraiser, because it was also a ten-week fundraiser I had to do, and so they donated to the calls like Mom's Pocorn, Distortions, Midnight Bookstores, Garrettson Sporting Goods, they all donated, and I very appreciate that. And today, we are coming together for a big event, and I'm very proud to, we are proud to host it. And to give a little more information is Ark of Weld County Representatives, which you already know, who will tell you a little bit more.
We are excited to share with you about the Twelfth Annual achieve with us Film Festival in celebration of March as National Developmental Disability Awareness Month.
So this film festival, I can't say enough about. It's absolutely amazing. It's a series of short films starring or produced by individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So some of these short films will make you laugh, some are gonna make you cry, and most of all, they are gonna inspire you by sharing inclusive practices that are taking place in our local schools and community. The overall theme that we want to share is that we are all more alike than we are different.
Hello, my name is Lilia Teckle, and I am a junior at Greeley Central High School, and I'm also vice president of Best Buddies. Best Buddies has opened my world up to so many different experiences and just allowed for me to make my world a little bit more inclusive, which is what I love about Best Buddies most. And with this art film festival event, we will share that opportunity with others and allow for them to also be more aware and involved when it comes to the disabled community. And it's just a great way to be included and inclusive. So, yeah, I'm really excited to, you know, be a part of change and be a part of the reason why Central might feel a little more inclusive for our buddies. So with that, I'd like to introduce Xavier, AKA X-Man, who is not only a part of the disabled community, but definitely a leader within it. So, Xavier.
Thank you, guys, to come. I like Best Buddies because our, um... Were we doing the, the video for our school, um...
Hello, my name is Emmy Sasaki. I'm a sophomore at Greeley Central High School, and I'm PR for this year's Best Buddies. I've been a part of Best Buddies since my freshman year last year, and it is just such an amazing club and just, it builds such a great community, and that community in part is due to the amazing support we have from our admin, from our teachers such as Ms. Goffney and Ms. Quinby, and we just could not be more thankful, as well as our student body. So just thank you guys all so much for the support in building the Film Festival and just for Best Buddies in general, and I can't wait to see it all come up, and the Film Festival Bowl is going to be awesome, so.
Good evening. My name is Hazelie Baromesta. I'm a junior at Greeley Central, and I've been in Best Buddies for about two years. Best Buddies is really such a great organization. I love it. I've learned so much about the disabled community, and I've just, I've gotten to spend time with them and really get to know them, and I, I just really like that. And mainly, the Ark of Weld County Film Festival, it's a really great opportunity. It's, we're not able to, like, showcase Best Buddies ourselves, but Best Buddies in general in other schools, in the country, international, and we're just able to represent those who aren't shown as much in our community. And so I feel like, like, we want everyone to come and support and hopefully see some familiar faces there on the day we're, we're hosting the Film Festival. And I hope that we'll get, we'll gain a bunch of success from there and just truly show the support for our disabled community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. As I conclude, I want to thank all the administration at Greeley Central for making this possible, Ms. Cooney over there, who's been coming to our meetings and being our admin to do it. We also like to thank all the teachers who are willing to put up with a little change in the auditorium, like Ryan Humphrey for letting us use the auditorium, Ms. Richardson for recently bringing music while people come in, Best Buddies in Colorado, they're gonna come down with us as well. It's this amazing thing, and I'm, I would like to personally invite everyone here, but also, if you know anyone, we're also looking for film submissions. And so we have two categories, so one professional and one local, like, basically, it's just you have your camera. And the winner of both categories will win $500 graciously from the Ark and their sponsors. And so we're looking for submissions, anything is possible, and we'll hope you guys are able to attend this event on March 29th, 2023. We have two sessions, one at 10:00 AM and one at 1:00 PM, and it's in that Greeley Central High School Park. Everyone is welcome, take pictures, you're welcome. We'll have our, our dance team perform as well with our buddies. It's gonna be great. We have some cool people higher up coming. This is gonna be a great event, so thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, Best Buddies, for, for being here tonight. I don't know if we have any questions or comments from our board members. I'll wait just a little bit to see if we, if we get some, and I do believe Ms. Mash has a comment.
I just wanted to say thank you to each one of you for coming to speak to us. I know it can be a little intimidating, and so I appreciate you having that courage and, and just sharing what's special about your club, and, and I know you all do an excellent job of spreading the word about what you're doing, both to the public and to the board, but also to your fellow Wildcats, because some of you are seniors, so pass the torch and, and get some more buddies going for next year.
Yes, we, we thank you all for being here tonight, and I do want to say a special thanks to you, Tommy. You know, we, we get to see you quite often. You're a senior now, we've seen you for, for four years, and Tommy, just so you guys know, Tommy tracked me down at the Greeley West Greeley Central basketball game to make sure that we got this on the agenda for this board meeting, and because it's so important. And so we appreciate all your commitment to this district, to Greeley Central, and certainly to Best Buddies, Tommy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here tonight, too.
Thank you.
Next up, on our agenda, we have a proclamation for Black History Month, and this is an action item that needs a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the proclamation recognizing February 2023 as Black History Month as presented.
Thank you both. Before we move forward, Mr. Bentley, would you be so kind as to read the proclamation for us?
Absolutely. Proclamation recognizing February 2023 as Black History Month, whereas Black History Month recognizes and celebrates the significant contributions of Americans tracing their ancestry to Africa, and whereas the observance of Black History Month has been proclaimed by every U.S. president since 1976, and whereas 46.9 million Americans and more than 550 students in Greeley Evans School District Six are of African descent, making up more than 2.3% of the student body, and whereas Black History Month is celebrated every February as a homage to the achievements of Black Americans who have shaped American history, from Buffalo Soldiers to the first Black president and vice president of the United States of America, and whereas the evolving history of Black residents of the United States is the history of our country, and whereas District Six is an institution of public education, and it is imperative that our schools teach the history of Black Americans and their experience living in the United States, and whereas District Six Strategic Plan, there is a strong commitment, in the District Strategic Plan, there is a strong commitment to cultural excellence and simplicity, recognizing accomplishments and contributions of Black Americans in the past, present, and future, and whereas the contributions of Americans who are of African descent in the fields of science, politics, medicine, education, art, music, writing, public service, and many other careers have greatly enhanced and advanced these fields, improving the lives of all Americans, and whereas the art, food, dance, music, and culture of Black Americans is embedded in the colorful weave of the fabric of American culture, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six recognizes and celebrates February 1st through February 28th, 2023 as Black History Month, and encourage all employees, students, families, and community members to honor our citizens of African descent and recognize their immense contributions to our communities, our state, our nation, and our world. Given under my hand, Executive of Weld County District, this 13th day, February 23.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Pilch, do you have any comments to lead off?
Thank you, President Matthews. I'd like to invite some of our Greeley West High School students to come to the podium on behalf of students here in District Six to accept this proclamation. So Samara Providence, Yasmin Adam, and Zanaya Shanks. I believe you're here in the audience. Would you please come up? And if you have other students with you. I see Mr. Allen is coming with you.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Forgive me if I'm a little shaky.
It's okay. When I have to stand on that side of the podium, it's scary for me, too. So go right ahead.
My name is Samira Providence. I'm student council president at Greeley West High School. This is my vice president, Yasmin Adam, and this is our next year's president, Zanaya Shanks. It's moments like these where I'm not just proud, but I'm honored to be a Black student in District Six. Last year, my junior year, I joined Greeley West Student Council, and I, we organized our first ever school-wide Black History Month celebration. We started off by playing music in the announcements every morning. We figured that music was an integral part of our community, and it was the perfect medium to spread our message. Little Beyonce, Marvin Gaye, it was great. And we also took time to interview our Black students and staff, give them an opportunity to be heard and share their stories with us, and our purpose was to empower our staff and students, and we feel as though we did a great job, and knowing that my community supports me assures me that we will continue to move forward, and I'm very honored to be here tonight and very grateful for everything this, this district has done for me.
We may have some, some questions or comments from board members, and first we have Dr. Campos Spitsy.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, guys, for pioneering the first Black History Month at your school. That's really cool. I was actually on the Greeley website, our District Six website, looking at how many students came from, came from Africa directly. You know, we have this map of where the kids are born in the district, and it was really cool. I think the number was 336 of our students in the whole district are born in Africa, right? So like, Black History Month is, is, is multi-generational, and in Greeley, it looks even more different sometimes than in other parts of the country where we have African-American students who, whose parents and grandparents and great-grandparents, and the lineage goes on, and then students who came themselves from Africa. So I think that makes our, our district so special. There's actually, I am gonna give a shout out to a restaurant in town. If you guys want to try some authentic Somali and Ethiopian food, there is a restaurant called Tawakal in town. Maybe one of the things that stood out to me besides the delicious food is their menu is trilingual. It's in English, in Somali, and in Spanish. I really like that. My kids, unfortunately, just ate spaghetti, but, which is the same in all three languages, pretty much. But, yeah, thank you, guys, for being here and representing and pioneering and being strong women of color, and I'm just proud that you guys are part of our school district.
Again, thank you for, for being here tonight, and we need to vote on, on this. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon, and I have a certificate for, for you guys to accept. Next up tonight is another proclamation, and this is a proclamation for National School Counseling Week, and this is also an action item that will need a motion to move forward.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six plans February 6 through 10, 2023, as National School Counseling Week as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we move any further, we need to, to read our proclamations. Ms. Mash, would you be so kind as to read this proclamation?
Proclamation recognizing February
Proclamation recognizing February 6th through 10th, 2023 as National School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors are employed in schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six recognizes and celebrates February 6th through February 10th, 2023 as National School Counseling Week. Given under the hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District Six this 23rd day of January 2023, Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Dr. Pilch, do you have anything to say regarding this proclamation before we open this up to board members?
Thank you, President Matthews. I'd like to invite the staff who are here tonight to accept this proclamation, to come forward, if you would, please. I know Kristen Dalton is here. I see Kendra Villarreal, and I think I see some other school counselors. So come on up and let us honor you a little bit here while we talk about you, if you would.
Thank you so much for the recognition. We want to make sure that our school counselors that are here to represent, Jamie Cranston, Deb Heck, Kendra Villarreal. I'm gonna let them speak.
As any smart woman would.
Good job. I'm Deb Heck, and I'm a school counselor in District Six for 24 years now. It's my 28th year in the district. I love it here. And just hearing all the students who spoke before is the reason we love our job. It's the best job. And I'm currently working with the Family and Student Support Team, working with some of our new counselors, Title I schools, and crisis support. And I'd like to introduce two of our finest. No one told me that this was a part of this. I just want to thank you, the school board, and our Greeley community, Greeley Evans community, for making mental health a priority. I've been in this district for 15 years now. And it's so cool that when I started, I think our counseling meetings were like maybe 10 of us. And we've grown to, I don't even know how many of us. But having employees and school counselors in every building is phenomenal. And it's nice to see the work that our kids are doing because of the mental health support. So thank you for making it a priority.
Now I feel the pressure to have to speak. I am, I did sign up for public comments later, so I will speak more in depth when I come back up. But I, too, want to reemphasize how much we appreciate all the supports that we have to really focus on our students in career and academics and personal social awareness. Our kids have been through a lot the past few years. And I have freshmen this year. So it's amazing to see how, even though the last three years they haven't, just the amount of trauma they've been through, and yet they're able to be resilient and pick themselves up and pass their classes and do high school when they're learning not only to be high schoolers, but deal with social things every day that they haven't had to make eye contact with people for so long, you know? So we appreciate the recognition, and thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Don't go anywhere just yet. We may have some board members that want to make some comments, and then we have a proclamation to present to you. So Ms. Mash?
I just want to say, as a parent, I have been blessed by my kids' counselors. Full disclosure, Ms. Villarreal has my freshman son. But it's so wonderful to know that there are other adults loving on my children and to not feel like I have to know everything about scholarship opportunities and clubs and all of those kinds of things that you're helping to keep an eye out for that. And in middle school, throughout pandemic, my son, you know, especially really utilized the counselor at his middle school. And yeah, it is wonderful to have so many caring adults and to hear the longevity of your careers here in District Six. Thank you for serving these students and families and the community for so long. And I know that your job is one of the hardest. You take on the emotions of the students. You are helping to help them find their way, what they want to study, their potential, all of those kinds of things. So thank you so much. It's wonderful to get to celebrate you specifically this week.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Pappas?
There are really no words to say how much we appreciate you and all of your colleagues. It is, for me personally, it is so, I'm so full of gratitude that we are able to have counselors in every school right now. And I know that that makes your jobs a little bit easier, because I know some of you travel to a lot of schools whenever there's a crisis, whenever there's something that happens. And I mean, I just, I can't even put into words to express how grateful we are for all of you. And some of you I've worked with closely, some of you I'm just meeting. But thank you, thank you, thank you. And know that it's not just this week that we appreciate everything you do every day to make differences in the lives of our kids and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
I just wanted to say that, actually, earlier today, I was talking to a friend who teaches middle school at a school that does not have a school counselor. And she had told me if there's one thing I could change about my school to make it better, it would be a school counselor. So that's how important you guys are.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. I'll just add that I think what I always find remarkable about our counselors is how well you know my kids. And it's, and how many of the kids in the school you know. I don't know if there's a single position in a school that knows as many kids as well as our counselors. And I see you all nodding. I think that's true. And so just that you know not only where they are applying for college, you also know who their friends are. And you know who just broke up with their girlfriend. And you know who's struggling with mental illness. And as Ms. Pappas said, it's an incredibly tough job that you guys enter into, and not just for our students, but also for staff. And so greatly appreciate the work that you do every day. And so thank you very much. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight is our Council of Student Representatives report. So Dr. Pilch is there. Coming forward, I just want to ask if there's anything you would like to say before our Council of Student Representatives gets to the podium.
Thanks, President Matthews. I think they are going to forego their report tonight since they participated with us in the work session. And I see heads nodding on that. So we're gonna skip that item. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. And thank you for being here tonight to our Council of Student Representatives. We did, for those of you who weren't in our work session, they presented to us their thoughts on calendar proposals. And it was great to get student feedback on those calendar proposals. And they do spend so much time assisting us in this district. So next on our agenda tonight is the Success Foundation update. And again, Dr. Pilch, I'll let you introduce this as Ms. Julie Hill comes forward.
Thank you, President Matthews. It's my honor to introduce Julie Hill, the Executive Director of the Success Foundation. And she has an update for us here. And we're always just so grateful for all that the foundation has done and continues to do for District Six, and so appreciative of her leadership.
Well, thank you. I've learned in listening to all the students tonight that I'm not very smart. We do have a junior board, and so in the future, you won't see me. I will have our students come and tell you about the work that we've done. But thank you very much for having me. I was counting my years on the way here. It's been almost seven years that I've been fortunate enough to be the Executive Director of the Success Foundation, serving Greeley Evans schools. Our board is honored to serve students and staff in District Six. Before I do tell you, give us our, give you our update, I would like to thank and recognize publicly, she's not here with us tonight because she's off in a faraway land, but Delia Hayfley just went off our board at the end of this last year. She has served her terms with us and served as our board president for the last two years. So really thank her for her dedication, commitment, and passion to students, obviously taught here for many years as well. We are happy that she is sticking around and helping with our junior board, so she's not leaving us forever. Other board members that you will see on Thursday night, we have some new members that will be new faces to you, but Terry Valinsky, Craig Kingman, Neil Kingman, Eric Nokie, Sarah Potter, Lindsay Salazar, John Shuttler, and Kelly Zeelman, who will be our new president. Thank them for their time to our board. So everything I'm going to tell you tonight, really, I want to give credit to our donors, our grant funders, our volunteers, our board members, and especially to District Six staff and students and Board of Education. We don't do what we do without everything that you do, and you make our jobs pretty easy. So the Success Foundation continues to grow. In 2022, we raised over $2.2 million for student projects and programs, and I appreciate the opportunity to highlight a few of them tonight. Some of these you've heard about before, because the good thing is, is they're multi-year projects now. So the first one is our Smart Lab project, started back in 2019. At this point in time, we do have 14 labs in the district, and there will be seven more put in over the next two years as bond projects are being completed at our schools. Very excited to have a STEM lab, as you saw those at McAuliffe. It sounds like great to see students in the labs, engaging environment, they're smart, they can tell you exactly what they're learning, they're problem solving, they're communicating. So we love taking people in. It was a bummer that, when we first put them in, that nobody could go into them. But we're looking forward to having some open houses with our donors. And that has been our biggest project to date. When it's all said and done, the Success Foundation would have raised over $4 million for Smart Labs. We continue to love our friends at Nutrition Services. Very excited to partner with them. In 2022, able to raise funds for nine school food pantries. Unfortunately, there's been a little delay in the fact, as everyone knows, hard to get equipment these days. So refrigerators and freezers have been delayed. But again, in speaking with my friends at Nutrition Services, that equipment is in Greeley and will be going in the spring. We do expect that some of those pantries will be operating by summer and fully functional by next school year. The goal there is also to put in a total of 33, so over the next two years, a school food pantry will be at all sites. Our board loves that for two reasons. Not only will school food pantries, I'm sorry, not only will school, I can't even say that. See, this is why our students should talk. School food pantries will provide students with a necessary means of nutrition while they're not in school. But it also helps reduce waste in our kitchens. There's now going to be a way to package food and store it properly so that it can be sent home with our students. We have our Delia and John W. Hayfley Opportunity Fund. That's still relatively new for us, but a great opportunity for us to remove financial barriers for students. This last year, we helped support music instruments, driver's education training. We were able to pay for sports physicals at the kickoff event. And we're about to send some students to the HOSA Future Health Science Professionals Conference in Denver, to name a few. There's a simple application on our website. We hope you'll continue to encourage students to apply for those that need individual help. And our next big project is the Career and Technical Education Center. Our goal is to raise $2 million over the next three years to support equipment and supplies there and other student needs related to concur in enrollment and credentialing costs. So in addition to the projects I've mentioned, we've also partnered with the district on a variety of directed gifts and grants. I would like to give a shout out to the Weld Trust. They've been a huge part of fundraising over the last couple of years. And they are currently supporting Read Act specialists in the district, registered behavior technicians, our Career Explore internship program, and the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. We've also had significant contributions to the Toynington Academy of Pre-Engineering. And we always love helping with the kickoff event, so glad to continue to support that. Recently, we have also offered some help to the Pooter Learning Center as they are in transition to a new director. And last but not least, because it's open right now, our grant applications are available out there for our Innovative Learning Grant Program. I think I, we said it was just for teachers. It is not just for teachers. It is for any District Six staff member who would like up to $2,500 to support a project that they would like to implement in their classroom, at their school, within their department. Those are open right now and will be open until February 10th. So we are seeing more submissions than we have the last couple of years, which is, which is good. So I'm going to wrap up with just some things coming up. President Matthews already mentioned, one of my favorite events of the year is the Success in Six Awards. I look back, I did not realize, we had 117 nominations this year from 57 last year. So that is a huge increase, really looking forward to celebrating on Thursday night. We will once again have our breakfast. This year, we are moving to Greeley West High School on March 6th. As I mentioned, we'll be involved in the kickoff event. And also proud to support Nelson Rodriguez and the Business Partner Appreciation Event in October. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take recommendations.
I think we may have some for you, Ms. Hill. We'll wait and see if there are any questions for you. But I'd just like to say thank you for all that the Success Foundation has done for this district over the, especially over the last few years, especially during those, the last three years. And we appreciate the great contributions that you've made, and we certainly appreciate your leadership in the organization as well. And so I do think we have a few board members, and first, we have Mr. Bentley.
Phil, this is hard to get used to. I just want to say thank you for all you do. One of the things that I was most surprised by when I first got elected was the Success Foundation. It was a new thing to me. I don't know if, I don't think that where I'm from, they have something like that. My school just wasn't quite as big. But to find out that there was a whole foundation that just was dedicated to raising funds on top of what the community already donates, and the businesses and the people that have the ability to do so, was just really amazing to me. And then second off, the CTE Center that we discussed the other day is really nearing during my heart. So I'm excited to lend a hand and do what we can to try to get as many people in the community involved and get that rolling this fall and see the kids there working on the trades programs and all that is offered for the community. So thanks for everything you guys do.
Dr. Campos Spitsy?
I had a question. You mentioned there's the individual scholarship to decrease financial barriers. Do you mind saying what the name of that scholarship is again?
Sure. It's our Delia and John W. Hayfley Opportunity Fund. We have an application on our website, just a simple application that students can apply for up to $500 in financial assistance for extracurricular activities, career opportunities, different things to help in their growth. And those are reviewed on an ongoing basis. So we try to get answers back within a, at least within a month, two to two weeks to a month period of time. Does that answer your question?
I'm not seeing any other questions or comments for you, Ms. Hill. But thank you again for being here. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you to the Success Foundation for all you do for our students and for our teachers from this district. It really is amazing to have such a partner, and we appreciate you greatly.
Thank you. We'll see you Thursday night.
We'll see you Thursday night. Next on our agenda, we have our Superintendent's Report. And Dr. Pilch, in my report or my comments, I was referencing our graduation data and how our graduation rate has gone up. And I think we've gone up almost, we're getting close to about 10%. I don't think we're quite at 10% since 2015. But I know sometimes it's confusing, it's confusing to know what's graduation data and how that interacts with our student achievement data and how those two things measure different things. And so could you speak to that in your comments, please?
Sure, President Matthews. I'll just start there. So there are several strands of student achievement data in the district. One, the one that gets probably most talked about, is the standardized testing that occurs one time in the spring. And so that's a one-time snapshot on student performance in a given content area. Depending on the grade level, the content area does vary throughout the system. It's not every grade level at, in every content area. Then there is local assessment data that we rely on very heavily. You all have seen some of this data and are familiar with it. We use NWEA maps, and we use that data at the beginning of the year to measure where our students are. And then mid-year, we've just gotten the mid-year data, and then end-of-year data. And that's the data that we're looking very closely to at most every grade level. And I say most every, because I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. But most every grade level to really look at student growth from where they are at the beginning of the year and then where they are at the end of the year. And it's also data that we can look at from year to year for individual students. We began using NWEA. We began using NWEA fewer than five years ago, shortly before the pandemic. The principals are nodding their heads at me, but it's proven to be a very powerful tool for us and, and really indicating to us where our students are directly related to the standards in our curriculum. Then we also have other local assessment data, like DIBELS data, which is a, an instrument that we use to measure growth as well. That data, as well as the NWA, both compare our students nationwide. So we're looking, with DIBELS, we're looking at how their, those students' peers are performing throughout, throughout the nation. And so that data is really important to us as well, to look at how our students are, are growing. Again, with DIBELS, we, we use that data beginning of year, middle of the year, and end of year. Checking with Dr. Dattery to be certain I got it right, but three times a year again. So we're able to look at students throughout the year and to watch their growth, growth over time, and then again, their growth from year to year. DIBELS is used at the earlier grade levels, not used at middle school and high school. At the high school level, we also have PSAT and SAT data. Again, it's a, you know, a test that students take one year, one, at one time a year. It's a shot of that test that day, and then that, that data is presented to us and compared statewide as well as nationwide. We also have the individual teacher data, which is very important. So throughout the district, our teachers are measuring student performance and achievement based on the standards that are in our curriculum and the standards they're teaching, and then they're measuring what students know and are able to do on assessments in their own classroom. So that's what informs classroom instruction day to day and helps teachers to know how to adjust their, their instruction, who needs additional help, who needs to be pushed up, who needs additional support, and so we use that data as well. So, you know, one of the questions that, that we often get is, well, when we look at this one shot of assessment data, it might not line up directly with graduation data. So I think that's probably where you're going with this. And so graduation data is really based on performance in, on grade level coursework, and so students' ability to show what they know and are able to do in an individual course in high school. The reason you've seen our graduation rate grow so dramatically is because this has been very deliberate, intentional work that we have focused on as a system for the, for the, really for the last seven years. And that, you look back eight years, you will see that we've seen dramatic increase because of that work. We actually began with what was called a graduation initiative, and we had counselors, yay counselors, and teachers and administrators on this graduates initiative committee to, to really develop the work that we would begin doing as early as sixth grade with students. So that fifth to sixth grade transition, that eighth to ninth grade transition. So our, and Mr. Osmus is going to talk more tonight about what that work looks like at the high school level and the middle school level in terms of really getting students to on-time graduation, and, you know, it's a big deal. We know that students that do not graduate high school have, are going to have a far greater chance of having a shorter lifespan, not having the healthcare that they need throughout their life, they're, they're going to struggle financially more likely than, than students who earn a diploma. These are real things, real data exists around this. And so having that high school diploma and being college and career ready, you know, continues to really be, really to be our primary focus here in District Six. So does that answer that question?
I think so.
And you'll probably have more when Mr. Osmus comes up.
But I thought, I wanted to explain that, and I thought you would just be a much better person to explain that, so thank you.
And it fits perfectly with one of the things in my superintendent's report I want to talk about, and that is that, just to celebrate that we have a Greeley Alternative Program and Next program graduation this Saturday. Those are two programs that, that we have significantly built up and restructured to ensure students have more opportunities for graduation and more opportunities to get onto the Ames campus or to get into the workforce directly where they're gainfully employed. We will have 36 students graduating from Gap and 12 earning their, their GED from Next or their diploma from Next. And so that is, you know, that, those are big numbers, they're bigger numbers than we would normally see mid-year like this, but it, you know, it's important to not wait till May because we might lose these kids by May. And so they're ready to go now, they needed one more semester to finish up, and they've had that semester, and now we'll have the opportunity of congratulating them on Saturday. So I look forward to that, as I know you all do too as well. Thank you for the kind words that you all said about our counselors, and, and thank you for what you said earlier about the Success in Six Awards, President Matthews, and that you really have to be exceptional here to, to look exceptional, because we have such a strong staff here in District Six, and I, you know, it's, it's January, and as I'm thinking about this second semester, I'm just thinking about how, how important our teachers, our counselors, our paraprofessionals, our social workers, our psychologists, our bus drivers, our, our food service workers, and our assistant principals and principals, and all of the support staff, and the, and the other supports we have in the classroom, our instructional coaches. I mean, we, we could not do what we do here in District Six for children. We would not have the graduation rate we have without the deep dedication of the employees we have here in District Six, and, and I don't think I say it near enough, and I, I, like you, who said you cried while you were reading your notes from the students, the baskets, Kyle cried. So I admit, Mr. Pilch, Mr. Pilch and Dr. Pilch sat and cried while we read the notes that were in my basket, and because you read the words of students, you know, you really, the work that you've committed to is really making a true difference here. And so I want to, I want to give a shout out again to all of the staff and administrators and students who worked on those baskets for all of us. I, I am not a board member, I did not deserve that recognition, but I want you to know, I felt the love, and I, I deeply and truly appreciate it, and I, I know that at least one middle school principal sat in a staff meeting and heard teachers all wrote notes because I had, I had a note, I think, from every staff member at Franklin Middle School, but, and then the bobbleheads were, are just a lot of fun, and Mr. Bentley has his here today with him, so we'll put it up and show you, but thank you for honoring us in that way, and, and I hope that in just some way, we can, we can find a way to honor all of you who here, work here and are on the front lines every single day with students. Thank you so much. So on those lines of, on the front line every day with students, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to speak to the AVID students, the Advancement via Individual Determination students, the 10th and 11th graders, who were doing their, their morning at University of Northern Colorado with their families and their AVID teachers who were there with them. And there were over 200 students there, I'm certain, I would guess by looking at the seats that were filled in the altern, though, that we had nearly 300 students, and they had the opportunity to learn about UNC, but also to learn about getting ready for college and, and ask questions and talk to college students and, and to do some of that admissions work. So thank you to all of the staff who were there on Saturday and gave up your Saturday morning to support students, and, and thank you to Amanda Krieger, who is our coordinator here at the district level, who coordinates AVID K through 12. We couldn't be where we are. And then again, thank you to our voters, because we have AVID now, K-12, because of that Millevy override. So thank you again for those Millevy override dollars so that we can do this very important work. And you know, Jillie, our, our president of our council student reps spoke with us in the work session tonight as we were looking at the calendar, and she said February is hard for her. And I, you know, I think I, this is my, I've already fifth year or something in education, and always November and February are, they are the hardest months. I don't know why, but they are the, you know, the munch you just kind of got to dig in and get through. And so as we go into February here, I just want to give a huge shout out to our students and all of our staff to hang in there, because after February comes March and spring break, and then April, and, and another day off, and then before you know it, we're to May and graduation, and the school year is out. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for your tenacity and sticking to it. And now, I have one last thing, and then I, I promise I'm done. There's just so much that's happening right now. I want to, I'm honored to introduce to you my recommendation for the new director at the Pooter Learning Center. This approval is on your consent agenda tonight, but I am recommending Sam Dances for that position, and I see Sam back there. Welcome, Sam. I'm recommending Sam Dances. Sam has been serving in the field of education for the past nine years, holding positions of program coordinator, education coordinator, graduation program coordinator, academic achievement center, support specialist, and field manager, head assistant director, and most of these, if not all, have not been in the true like K-12 arena, but, but Sam has worked with K-12 as well as college students, supporting, supporting students, and most recently has been serving at the University of Colorado Ann Shute's Medical Campus. And I asked the question in the interview, so that's a pretty fancy job. What brings you to, to want this job in Greeley? And what Sam told me was that, that it is so important to be a part of the community in which you live, and that, that, that you want to be here, you, you want to be closer to home and, and be a part of this community. So upon the board's approval tonight, we are going to welcome you to this community. Sam earned a bachelor's degree in history from Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey, and then went on to obtain a master's of education in social justice education at Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts. And so pending your approval tonight, please join me in welcoming Sam. Sam Dances. Thank you, Sam. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and don't turn your microphone off, because we're coming right back to you with Innovation 2030 update on Student Learning and Achievement Goal One, and as, I'm not sure who's going to come and present this for us.
Mr. Anthony Osmus is going to come up, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Leadership and Career and College Readiness, I think, is, is titled now, but.
That works today.
Mr. Osmus, welcome, and, and we look forward to this report tonight, and, and I see that you have Meredith Allen with you to, to help back you up, and, and who is our principal at the Greeley Alternative Program.
And I'll give her all the tough questions, that's why she's here. So, good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. My name is Anthony Osmus, I am the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools and, and Career and College Readiness, and it is our pleasure to provide an update on the District Six graduation rate and the efforts in place for continual improvement, and this is an Innovation 2030 update. I do have Ms. Meredith Allen with me tonight, the administrator of Gap, to talk about their supports. And as always, we'll wait for this to populate for you, I think, but we'll get going. Our district, our mission and our vision, District Six engages every student in a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career-ready. And our vision, where District Six engages, empowers, and inspires today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. And there you have it. And our values, our students do come first, and we know that every child can succeed and achieve, and we commit to excellence, innovation, and as, as always, continuous Keep this up with me here. Our graduation rates really live in all four of the areas on Innovation 2030, student learning and achievement, strengthening partnerships, climate and culture, and organizational and operational effectiveness, but mostly this work lives in student learning and achievement. Our main goal, our number one goal actually, in student learning and achievement is to provide a personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are career and college-ready, and we emphasize the "all." We have two strategies to do this work, aligning our systems to meet graduation requirements and graduation competencies through personalized learning plans, as well as increasing engagement in our career pathways. These are critical steps to accomplishing our goals. I am happy to announce that this year, we did move up from 84.1% to 84.6%, which is an increase of 0.5% from last year, and it is not easy to make gains like this. And so it really is finding every single student and supporting every single student, making sure they have what they're, what they need to be successful. This increase in our graduation rate is even more impressive, since last year was the first year the additional graduation guidelines were required by the state. So in addition to the, to acquiring the required number of credits, students must also pass an additional academic or career-based requirement. These extra requirements include, but are not limited to taking the ACT and passing with an AT in English or an AT in math, the SAT passing with a 470 in English or a 500 in math, taking an AP class in the exam and scoring a two or higher, or an IB exam and scoring a four or higher, taking a concurrent enrollment class and passing it, or even earning an industry certificate. I'm happy to announce that 100% of our students this past year were able to meet the additional graduation requirement in our first year of implementation, and we are very thankful for our community for passing the MLO. These tests all cost money, and our MLO does fund these tests for our students. So thank you, community, for that. This chart captures our graduation rates for each high school, and just to note that charter schools do count in our overall graduation rate. This would be a great time to show gratitude to our charter schools and our district, district school staff that support our students. It is their relentless guidance and hard work that motivate our students to graduate on time. Graduation cohorts start in the seventh grade. Teachers and administrators at each building spend time each year tracking down every single student that leaves their building to make sure they are still in school somewhere and tracking them down if, if they are not in school somewhere. If, if a student disappears from our cohort, that counts against, counts against our graduation rate. So it's important that we know where every single student is, in and out of our district at all times. You might notice on here that the alternative school rate is 55%. These schools include Jefferson High School and Gap, our Greeley Evans Alternative Program, or which I lovingly call our Acceleration Program. Although, although these numbers are lower, please know that these two buildings typically accept all students that get off track at their own high schools, whether it's charter or district. These schools offer accelerated programs, and most students can get back on track, but some do need additional time to graduate. If it does take more than the four years, they do not count towards our graduation rate, however, it's important that we do get them to graduate, even if it does take a little longer than four years. And now for some desegregated data. In our strategic plan, Innovation 2030, we set our goal at 90% by 2030. This slide shows our overall district graduation rate for the past year, which is 84.6, compared to the state graduation rate of 82.3. If you think of where we've been, in 2017, our district was at 78.7. We are definitely on the right track. Our increase is a testament to the focused work found in our strategic plan set by our Board of Education, tireless work from principals, counselors, teachers, and support staff in the buildings and around the district, as well as the leadership of our superintendent to ensure that this work remains a priority. This slide shows our graduation rate for students with disabilities compared to the state. In 2018, we implemented our special education plan, which focused on getting students into the classroom and supporting them as they received grade-level instruction. Also around this time, we implemented co-teaching, which put another teacher in some core classes for students needing extra support. As you can see, higher levels of rigor with the right, right support shows significant This graph compares our limited English proficiency students to the state average. At the same time our special education plan was developed, we implemented our master plan for English language learner success, which focused on instructional strategies supported by our partners at WestEd. We also started using our CLD teachers as co-teachers to support students in class at grade level rather than pulling students out of class. This led to greater student engagement, stronger academic discourse, and growth each year for these scholars. This graph compares our economically disadvantaged students to the state average. Just know that 65% of our students fall into this category compared to 40% of other students around the state. Our shift to an inclusive mindset, co-teaching, access to rigorous instruction, and solid instructional strategies showed gains in other subgroups as well. Definitely going the right, the right way, and this data boasts the largest difference between our rate and the state. This data compares our students of color to the state average in this category. The past few years, we have intentionally focused our efforts on becoming more culturally responsive to increase the sense of belonging, which has shown higher student engagement, greater satisfaction, and significant gains in the graduation rate for our students of color. This work has also improved communication with students and families around the importance of graduation and an overall school-wide appreciation of diversity. Our last slide shows the graduation rate for our students that are not counted in the economically disadvantaged, special education, or language learner student groups. This is only our district data, as the state does not calculate and report this data set. All in all, we are seeing growth in all of our students and continue to outperform the state average for all-time graduation in all categories. Now this last set of data I will share tonight is our dropout rate. As you can see, in 2017, the state and district were about 2.3%. Data from 20, 2020 and 2021 showed District Six slightly lower than the state in regard to dropout rates, and this past year, the state and our district had a slight increase in the dropout rate. As we interview our students that did drop out, we typically find that these students have found a job, or their family needs an income right now, and so they're, they're choosing to take that route rather than graduate high school, but we're always there for them when they come back. We do offer a few options for our scholars when they fall behind in credits at their home high school. Jefferson High School is an alternative high school that offers acceleration where every quarter is a semester. Great opportunity to get, to get caught up if you do fall behind. Gap is another alternative program that offers more flexibility than Jefferson. by offering morning, afternoon, and evening classes, and our next program that allows students to get their GED. Ms. Meredith Allen is here to talk to us a little bit about Gap. And I won't steal your thunder, Meredith. I was going to share some data, but I'll let you do that. So I'll turn this over to Meredith.
I am Meredith Allen. I'm the principal of Gap. I would like to thank Dr. Pilch and the Board of Education for the continual support of Gap. We would not be able to do what we do without all of you. Gap has been a program for 14 years. We take juniors and seniors from D6 high schools and our charter schools that are not on track to graduate on time and work to get them there. Since 2019, our team has increased Gap's graduation from 45% to 55%. And this Saturday, we are going to be graduating 36 students. Of those 36 grads, one is a junior, which is exciting. And 26 students are graduating a semester early. I'm really excited to see what we have in store for June graduation. So the question Anthony asked was how does Gap get kids graduated? Our building goal this year is to rebuild academic hope in our students. So when we're doing these interviews with our students, a majority of them are sharing that they have never felt successful in school. And we know that when students don't feel good about school, it's hard to get them to come to school, and it's harder to get them to do work when they're in school. I asked two students who recently graduated, who came to us as juniors, to just share what helped them. So one came as a junior with a ton of anxiety and depression. And she, he shared, "I found myself in a pretty rough patch. I was struggling in a regular school setting, both in social situations and academic-wise. I don't know why. I thought something was wrong with me. And as my birthday was approaching, I considered dropping out. But instead, I transferred to Gap. I'm incredibly glad I did. The first few months were monumental. I felt smart and slowly began to feel like myself again. I felt like I could achieve graduation when only a few months prior I was certain that I was going to fail out of my junior year." And then there is another student that came to us as a junior who was getting into a lot of trouble at his homeschool. He shared, "I've been coming to Gap for almost a year now, and I absolutely loved it." He graduated last week. "It's different from other schools I have attended in the past because I had so much hate build up towards people in the schools. When I came to Gap, I didn't have to be mean anymore. The teachers built relationships with me, a bond. That is why I was so successful at Gap, because I looked at it as a second home. I felt safe." So obviously, as the principal, you feel really good about that. But I also think there's just a ton of other things that we do to help these students on their journey. Number one is we have an amazing staff. They care about these kids, and they build positive relationships with them. We also do a lot of early identification of needs. So when the students come in, we do one-on-one interviews and identify where they're really struggling and connect them to services before they even start. We do accelerated classes, so we make them feel successful right away so they can see the light of graduation quicker. We've also implemented Gator Time. So we don't have any electives, or gym, or art, or music. And so we started doing Gator Time. And that's where they get access to art time, sports, music. And it really builds connectivity in the school because, you know, it's one-on-one learning. So they're not really connecting with other students in the classroom. And they always come on Thursdays because that's when it is. Like Anthony shared, we do flexible schedules. So we work hard to meet the needs of all students' schedules. So we have three shifts, which really helps accommodate students that are working, to support their families, students that have children, students that just need different sleep schedules. Students work at their own pace, which allows them to spend time learning the content without feeling the pressure of other students. You see students really at ease in the classroom because they're not worried about keeping up with someone. And if they need to, they can go faster. Each student has an individual graduation plan, and that's something that we implemented four years ago. So when students come in, we show them exactly what they need to do each quarter in order to get graduated on time. Our team works on a lot of out-of-the-box ways to get students the classes they need and to get graduated. So those are the things that we do to increase our graduation rate, make kids get across that finish line.
And we'll see some on Saturday, Meredith. So as we head into our next steps, I do just want to recognize, and I know Dr. Pilch did too, but just all of the people that make this our graduation rates possible. So just starting in elementary with our leaders in elementary, I know when kids show up in kindergarten, we start talking about graduation and what you'll need to graduate, and how excited that will be. And working our way through the system with our principals and our assistant principals and our teachers and our support staff and our bus drivers, we are all focused and we're all driven to help students graduate and change a life. So we do have some next steps in our work. So we are still working on consistent grading practices so that whenever you walk into a classroom, that we are grading students in a very consistent way. We are, this year, working on a ninth-grade support system. And so just wrapping back around, catching students. So when you come into us as a ninth grader, that we've got someone who wraps around you and loves you and protects you and is going to ensure that you're going to graduate. We have been working the last few years on this student acceleration when you're behind, and we're getting pretty darn good at that right now. And then we also have strong MTSS teams in place to work on the credits and get you in the right place if you need it or get you caught up at that exact moment. We're working on personalized learning plans. You'll probably hear more about that, I'm sure, this year. We are piling that in a few schools. That'll be very helpful in this work. And we do have attendance liaisons and credit recovery specialists supported by zero dropouts that do help with our work. And so when a student is not coming to school, we've got some support to go out and go to their home and track them down and try to get them back at school, as well as credit recovery specialists, which can work with you and help you get caught up and stay caught up. And so we've got that personal touch at each of our high schools that we can go to. So with all of that, we say thank you, and we celebrate the increase in graduation rates. And we would be happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you both for being here tonight and for that presentation. I do think we have a few comments or questions for you. And so we'll lead off with Dr. Campus Spitsy.
So thank you, Meredith, for that work, all that work that you do. You're my new hero. When I have teenagers who are pregnant in my exam room, some as early as 13, 14 years old, I tell them, "You know what studies show is the best thing you can do for that baby inside of you? Graduate high school." Because it's true. Public health shows it's not the prenatal environment. It's graduating high school. So the fact that you guys offer all of these pathways to get there, I just think that's incredible. Thanks.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, the on-time graduation rate versus the not-on-time graduation rate, do we have any data on how many kids are graduating not on time? And just, I mean, that's the goal, is get them to graduate. So to me, it's more important that they graduated than on time is important. But do we know how many kids are graduating as super seniors? That's what we call them. I don't know if that's PC, but...
Anthony would like me to answer that question, it looks like. We absolutely do have that data. It's called completer data. And so it's kids who graduate in year six, seven, eight, five, six, seven, maybe even eight, right? And so we'll get you guys that in your weekly memo. So when you see that gap of difference between that 2.1% dropout rate and then your 86% graduation rate, that gap in there between those numbers, those are your completers. And some, it takes a semester extra, some it takes two or three years extra. One of the things that you see in this data improving so much, especially those first few years where we had the bigger spikes, was this intense focus on getting the right interventions to the kids to graduate on time. And so that was part of our implementation of the NEXT program. So NEXT is really intended for those very older students who are not going to make it with all their graduation requirements before that semester of their 21st birthday. And so NEXT is intended for a GED completion. And best-case scenario, typically, while a student is at NEXT, they will also have an opportunity to begin coursework at Ames Community College. Because a GED is really not that much more beneficial than having dropped out if you do not start some sort of post-secondary training. So whether that's career and technical training, or whether that's, you know, traditional college coursework, we try to get students to that pathway.
And we do have those super seniors in both Gap and Jefferson, too. So we offer that opportunity for those students to come back and just finish up that next quarter, that next semester, whatever, whatever time they need to graduate.
Okay. Also, I just, I wanted to highlight maybe the economically disadvantaged numbers. Our averages were 150% of the state average, but we're still graduating 10% more kids, I think, if I remember math correctly. But that's a huge deal. So that's kind of a kudos to you guys in the district and staff and the community, you know, raising, you know, community-raising kids. So that's cool. And then I also wanted to just mention, the Gap graduation is super special. I got to attend one last year. And just to see those kids, a lot of them are first-time graduates, and they generally have their own cheering sections and balloons. And it's really special. So great job doing that, and I'm excited for it this weekend.
Ms. Pappas?
Thank you both for coming tonight and sharing this information. I did want to remind people and put out a thank you also for Dr. Pilch and the leadership team of the work that, when we started this intentionality of making sure that we did have the success in graduation, the audits that we did with special education, the English language learners audits, I mean, that's a pretty vulnerable thing to do in a school district, is to have people come in and take a look at what you're doing and what you can do better. And I think that part of it is just the belief across our system that, yes, every student can learn, and we will provide rigorous education for every student and access to grade-level content. And then also a shout out just to the people that are working on that, the equity and the cultural responsiveness and the teams that we have at schools. I mean, this is not, I mean, this is something that starts right now in kindergarten, with everybody having the belief that, yes, every one of our students can learn. So thank you to everyone that's participating in this. And then I do have one question, though. So do we, this might be for Dr. Pilch. What do we do about those students, or how do we know which students just are at a high school and they just leave, and we don't know where they are? Do we have a way of finding out where they are?
Yes. And this was particularly, you know, problematic during the pandemic. No question about it. So what we do is, in August, when everybody starts coming back, we have a code until we know where that student is. So whether they've enrolled into another school, and then actually, we have a transcript request as well from that school, or we know if they've completed somewhere else. And so the state reports that back to us, or if we can't find them. And so we have several folks who work on finding students. Most recently, with those ESTR dollars, we hired the attendance advocates. Those folks actually hit the ground running in July and August to go find, to really go find students. We also have school counselors doing that. We have teachers doing home visits, administrators doing, you know, knocking, walking knocks on doors to welcome children back and bring students back. But we really, you know, we don't give up until we can find out where that student went. I mean, if at all possible. Because the worst-case scenario would be that something horrible has happened to that student, right? And they've just gone missing completely. So we take this very seriously, and we look at them student by student. And that's really what it takes to improve student achievement the way that we have in this district. I mean, it's why we've turned around, the schools we've turned around. It's, you know, it's why we don't have schools on turnaround any longer in this district because of this work that we've done that is student by student and family by family. And again, we do that because of the deep, dedicated staff that we have and the resources. We have put significant resources toward this work.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions or comments for you. And I'll just close with this, echoing what Mr. Bentley said. You know, it's almost 10 percentage points economically disadvantaged over the state. And that is, that is just amazing when you think about it. And we've mentioned our teachers and how exceptional they are, and certainly our counselors and the supports that they get. But Dr. Pilch just mentioned it, what we've been able to contribute to programs, the way we've been able to support Gap, programs like Avid, the programs that we've heard about tonight, whether they're concurrent enrollment or career in tech ed, and giving kids a vision for their future and matching what that vision is to what they're doing in the present, it all makes a difference. And we're so thankful for our voters for allowing us to continue to do that work and passing that MLO. And so thank you, guys, for being here tonight. Mr. Bentley?
The charters, their numbers are outstanding. So that's cool that we have them in our district.
All right. Thank you, guys. Next tonight, we have our public participation. So the board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the board. All speakers are limited to two minutes for their comments. The board does typically not engage in discussion or provide immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speaker remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade. Students, defamatory or threatening remarks are always out of order. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. All speakers and those in attendance shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. And so with that read, we'll welcome our first speaker tonight, Ms. Stacy Castillo. She's a parent in the district. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I would like to discuss the growing concern of the quality of education our children are getting in the Greeley Evans School District. At a state Board of Education meeting on October 12, 2022, Dr. Pilch was asked how many of her fourth graders are reading at grade level. She answered, and I quote, "I am shooting in the dark here, but about 30%." So 30% of fourth graders can read at grade level. It doesn't take a professional to know that that's failing. Yet, the district continues to boast that their graduation rate is 84%. Meanwhile, as a district, we are only at a 34% proficient reading rate and a 22% proficient math rate. Again, it doesn't take a professional to know, these numbers are not adding up. It's no wonder why the number of students needing remedial college classes is at 43%, and that was pre-pandemic. How can that be preparing children for tomorrow's world? If our district is doing so well, why are so many students needing help to take college entry classes? Honestly, what did we expect when we instituted equitable grading, where a student only has to write their name on an assignment and turn it in without even answering one question on the assignment, and the worst that they could do is 50%? Or how a student is more likely to get points marked off of an assignment because of a tardy than for not actually knowing the material? We need to get away from the panorama surveys because they just push critical race theory and social-emotional learning or redirecting, whichever form you choose to use, and get back to the basics. If we'd like to help support students to graduate, we need to spend more time being concerned about our proficiency numbers and not the low numbers of high school students enrolled in the IB program, or figuring out how to make the IB program more inclusive to get those numbers boosted up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next up, we have Ms. Kendra Villarreal, a parent in the district and counselor in the district. Welcome, Ms. Villarreal.
Good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch, and members of the community. I would like to thank you for recognizing our district school counselors tonight. It is nice to know you understand the value and longevity of our work. I wanted to take a moment to honor the good work counselors are doing in this district. We're not good about being in the limelight, but I do think it's important for you to know how our work affects our students. I want to read an email I received two weeks ago. Dear Mrs. V., you were my student counselor when I went to Greeley Central. I graduated in 2008. I wanted to write to you to let you know you made a significant positive impact on me and my post-high school endeavors. My path hasn't been easy or linear. In part, due to the confidence and resilience you helped me realize, I haven't given up yet and I don't plan to. I have two degrees, and I am ready to take on the bar exam to realize my dream of becoming a lawyer. While in law school, I was a mentor for first-year students, was the president of Legal Honor Society, volunteered for students dealing with law enforcement, and I'm a Costa volunteer for children in foster care. I've strived to use my experience to help others actualize their potential as you and other mentors in my life have done for me. This was a small reminder of the lasting impact we work to ensure for the thousands of students we have served. I know all of our counselors have received notes like this throughout the years, and I know I'm not speaking for myself when I say our students are our passion. I know I'm not speaking for myself when I say our students are our passion. We advocate for them every day as we realize they are our future leaders. Other comments received are, "Thank you for being there for me," over the past few months. "Thank you for being supportive, loving, prepared, resourceful, and friendly. Not only are you an amazing trustworthy adult, but you always look out for me and push me to be the best and healthiest version of myself." These are to other counselors that I work with. They're amazing. They give us so much more. Thank you for those who have been there for us as well. Thank you for cheering us on, listening to us, for understanding our triumphs and sorrows. Thank you to those who have taken the time to meet with us, guide us, and advocate for us as well. We need you as much as our students need us and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. Next up tonight, we have Ms. Sandy Magnuson. Welcome, Ms. Magnuson. Thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, all of you in the room who have so beautifully honored school counselors tonight, thank you. I look forward to the first week in February every year because that's my chance to celebrate and champion school counselors across the country. I was a school counselor educator, so I can tell you they're power based professionals. They do help kids dream big, but that's not all. They help them make plans to make those dreams come true. You all know, but others may not know that school counselors are licensed only after completing rigorous graduate programs, usually 60 hours, and then they continue their education. Their preparation and ongoing professional development have to be extensive because of the vast and extensive responsibilities we give to them. They're educators and they're frontline mental health professionals who are skilled in prevention and intervention. They facilitate academic success, personal social development, as well as career and college planning. That means they help kids acquire skills that contribute to career success, fulfilling lives as adults as well. That means decision making, critical thinking, teamwork, communication skills, critical problem solving, responsibility, so much more. And then their impact is only multiplied as they collaborate with important adults in the lives of our students, the teachers, and others in the community. Yes, I am passionately proud of school counselors and just can't thank you enough for so beautifully honoring them tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Magnuson. Next tonight, we have Ms. Mary Roberts. Ms. Roberts is a resident of District Six. Welcome, Ms. Roberts. Thank you for being here tonight and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Mary Roberts. I live in the district and my husband and I have a business in the district. In preparing for tonight, I was looking at Innovation 2030, the strategic plan. And of course, you focused tonight on student learning and achievement, which-
Ms. Roberts, would you pull the microphone down just a little bit so we could hear, hear you a little bit better? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, it just doesn't pick up very, you know, if you're too far away. Thank you so much.
All right. So student learning and achievement, number two on that list is strengthening partnerships. And in my world, the businesses are partners with school district. And we are one of them. At our business, we've hired a number of school district six graduates and occasionally students who are still in the school district. We're delighted to have them as part of our business. We've also been attending the Success Foundation breakfasts since its inception, and it's been my good fortune to volunteer at several schools through the years. I got to volunteer as a reader with little second, first graders. I also was participating in recognition of the book trust, and so those students got to read to me, and it was a wonderful experience. And at one point, we were able to provide a crib at what is now, I guess, called the Gap Program. The crib was needed to be on wheels in case there was a fire, we'd be able to wheel the crib out. So I consider this my school district. My grandchildren have graduated from this school district. I have felt like I've been a participant in the schools as a volunteer. It's been my privilege to do that. And I want to thank you for allowing us to be partners with you and to volunteer in the school district. It's been great.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Next up tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Ms. Foster is a resident in the district. Welcome, Ms. Foster, and thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
I retired from District Six after 31 years. My two kids attended District Six schools from pre-K to graduation. I currently volunteer at Charter School of Innovation, three to five days a week. And I constantly tell the staff that if I don't get a ka-ching moment and a laugh every day, I'm not coming back. So here's a ka-ching and a laugh moment from a second grade article that's written by a second grader about the three kinds of symbiosis. Mutualism is an interaction in which both organisms benefit, like the sawarow cactus on the pack rat. The pack rat gets food from the sweet and juicy fruit. The cactus seed gets caught on the pack rat's fur. The cactus is now planted. Another example of mutualism is the cactus and the Gila woodpecker. The Gila woodpecker gets a home, plus a side of free food. The cactus gets a bug repellent, which kills the insects that could spread viruses. Look down if you want to learn about commensalism. Commensalism is an interaction in which one organism benefits and the other is unaffected, like the sawarow cactus and an ant. Ants have many predators and the cactus gives the ants protection. The cactus has no opinion. Another example of commensalism is the decomposers and the sawarow cactus. The cactus is lying on the floor. All of the birds move out, but the decomposers move in. The decomposers are mostly ants and termites. They happily munch on the cactus's dead ribs and flesh. Parasitism is an interaction in which one organism benefits, but the other is harmed, like the sawarow cactus and the jackrabbit. The cactus is just sitting in the desert. The jackrabbit takes a big and juicy bite out of the cactus, but watch out for thorns. Another good example of parasitism is the Gila woodpecker and the insects. The insects are happily but slowly eating the cactus's insides, but not when the Gila woodpecker comes. All the insects will be gone in one to two days. And that was written by a second grade student in one of my writing groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Mariah Foster, also a resident of District Six. I'm sorry, Maria Foster, maybe.
There isn't Mariah Foster, not me.
I wasn't looking closely enough. Welcome. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Superintendent Pilch, members of the board. I know that there have been a number of complaints about different books in the school system, and I want to share a story that might give a little different perspective when books are undergoing review. 22 years ago, my niece was attending elementary school in District Six when she was sexually assaulted on school grounds after school. The attacker was never caught. As you can imagine, this was a very difficult time for her and all her family. But gradually, different people came forward to share their own stories of being assaulted. They were sharing to offer comfort, strength, community, and kindness that they were in a unique position to do. I was stunned to learn of so many people with whom I was acquainted who had experienced this trauma. It was supportive and healing to realize that we were not alone and that others had found a way through. But not everyone may have family and a community, or they may not believe that they do. Bad things happen to people. Sometimes bad things happen to kids and to their families. And when kids can find these stories in books, it may be the safest place. Sometimes it might be the only place where they can find a positive outlet and the support to work through their emotions, where they can realize that they are not alone. So passages in books that might, that some might deem offensive can, in context, be meaningful and helpful. And for those who have been fortunate enough to not experience such hardship or pain, it can be a starting point for compassion and empathy. Wanting to shield children from certain subjects is understandable, but some students and families in our district have already experienced difficult realities and censoring the literature will not change that. Libraries, classrooms, and books can be a safe, supportive place for them. And for those of us who are more fortunate, like I was growing up, it can be a way to explore another's reality and in so doing, gain some empathy and some understanding. We need to be mindful that shielding doesn't become erasure. Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Ms. Candace Sawyer. Ms. Sawyer is a resident of District Six. Welcome, Ms. Sawyer. You'll have two minutes.
Hello, Board. I'm the other disgruntled mom, as Pilch likes to call me. It's absolutely sickening how you all attacked Ms. Sullivan at the last board meeting for bringing forward her concerns publicly, which from what she said, they've been ignored. Imagine that. We all know how that feels. Ms. Mash, you commented that she should address her concerns at a meeting with everyone, but how's that possible when Ms. Pilch holds them two by two instead of with all of you at one time? Apparently you all haven't learned that when people get ignored, they bring their concerns to the public. When are you all going to understand that we are not going to stop exposing the truth and how little our children mean? Because some of you are worried about money in your pockets and all of you worried about your status in the eye of the people funding your greed in one way or another. You talk about respect, equality, diversity, but when anyone dares to address very serious issues within this district, you sit back and with your disrespectful behavior and play your victim games to cover the very things we expose from gathering facts and truths or whatever you want to call it. You've forgotten who the true victims are, our children. From the sexually explicit adult books to reducing credits to boost the graduation rate, which in turn is failing our children when they leave with a 22% math and 34% reading proficiency, to the bullying and abuse among students not being handled properly, as well as keeping it quiet to protect teachers and staff involved in the same behavior or not intervening. For instance, a teacher at Bella Romero was fired January 6th for physical abuse on three separate children. How long was that going on before it was held accountable? Or the child brutally assaulted by other students at Centennial in the spring of 2021, who now lives with serious trauma and mental health issues, as well as continued bullying? The boys that assaulted her served in-school suspension for five days while the victim was treated like it was her fault, and it wasn't the first time she was assaulted. When are these traumatic events going to stop and when are you guys going to do something about what's going on in this community? I see it in community groups all the time, the amount of bullying that is going on. You tout how the kids come first, so why are we constantly having to address the same problem year after year? When are you going to make them the priority you claim that they are? By the way, Rob, I want to thank you for what you did tonight in saving someone's life. You didn't get the recognition you should have.
Thank you, Ms. Sawyer. Next up tonight, we have Ms. Jackie Bellandere. Welcome, Ms. Bellandere. Thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Parents, you have a right, a duty, and a responsibility to know what your children are being taught. You have a right to know who your school board members are and what they represent. And there's only one board member that cares about the parents, and that's Mrs. Sullivan. All of you should be ashamed at the way you treated her at the last school board meeting. One of you said you have a diversity of thought on the board, but that's not really true, is it? Several of you share very radical ideas, go to the same church, have connections through your employment, an interesting entanglement of group think, fully accessible on social media. You went decorum here, but at what cost? Free speech? The truth? You gladly welcome applause when it's supporting your agenda. And according to Fox News, 349 K through 12 educators were arrested on child sex crimes all across the U.S. last year. Has anyone researched to see if there's any correlation to the staggering numbers of sex crimes against children in schools across America? To the books containing graphic sex scenes or cartoon drawings or the comprehensive sex ed programs in the schools? Hmm, maybe that's something that should be investigated. And according to Christopher Rufo of the Manhattan Institute, and I quote, "According to that research, the scale of sex abuse in the public schools is nearly 100 times greater than that of the Catholic Church." So the big question is, whose children are they?
Thank you, Ms. Bellandere. Next tonight, we have Mr. Bruce Berdarius, Dr. Bruce Berdarius. Welcome, Dr. Berdarius.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
...opportunity to speak with you briefly. I think there's another perspective that needs to be taken into account. Each and every time you sit in that chair as a board member, who do you represent? Who? And how many? I extrapolated the voting data from the last vote for Bonham Mill Leving. You have 24,000 voters that support you. There's only 75 people in this room. Each one of them would represent 3,100 voters that support this school board. I think that perspective you should keep tight. People are going to weasel on you, and they are fairly good at it. But remember the majority, voting majority that support this school, that support you. And I need, you need to have that reinforced. I didn't use my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Berdarius. Welcome, Ms. Miller. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
It was Monday again, and E6 was a buzz. They bugged the whole building and hired the fuzz. From the looks of the place, you might ascertain that your safety is in danger or the public's insane. But let's unpack this theory, and it becomes clear, it's the tyrants among us who have all the fear, as they should, I suppose, since they think it's okay, to give porn to our kids and to mask them all day. Not only that, they got some to take the juice in their arm that might seal their fate. $100 to Walmart might seem like a lot to the students who bribed to take all those shots. Now people around us were all dropping dead. It was safe and effective, or so you said. The jabbers don't give us informed consent. They just roll up your sleeve and experiment. Birth rates are down, now babies are rare. How could our students have known to beware? Blood clots and heart attacks, both on the rise. Strokes are so common, we don't bat an eye. This is what happens when we buy all their lies. Did you think Pfizer cared who lived or who died? The doctors and nurses aren't innocent here. These drug pushers love to use pressure and fear. From day one of life till your kid is 18, they'll try to inject him with all sorts of things. My grievances abound in this district of Satan, our logo, the Sixes, the pastor who's faking. You tyrants made rules and enforced them for money and then called us narcissists and thought it was funny. Graduation rates up, so I read in the letter, but it's just lower standards that make them seem better. These kids aren't proficient, but you push them all through so the stats don't look bad on the district or you. When board member Sullivan began to start speaking, you ignored her attempts and adjourned the whole meeting. She works for the people like we elected her to. She won't conform to the board. Now she's bullied by you. Look at yourself, so you're proud to be trolls who cause child suffering at the cost of your souls? Your tyrannical streak is going to end. Mama bears are awake and our kids will defend.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Well, that concludes public participation tonight. I don't think, just want to make sure we haven't had any, we do have a couple more people signed up, but I don't think they're here tonight. So that'll conclude public participation tonight, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. And this will need a motion in a second.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
I used to be third.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight is our charter school renewal application deadline extension. This is also an action item that will need a motion. I move that-
Go ahead.
Sorry. I move that the Board of Education extends its ruling to renew Salida Dell Soul Academy and Westridge Academy to February 13th, 2023, as mutually agree between the district and the schools.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on this one before we, before we have any discussion?
This is a pretty standard procedure that the-
This is a pretty standard procedure, that the district and the charter of school can agree to extend the deadline, the February 1st deadline that is in state law and board policy, and we've mutually agreed to do that. We enjoy a really productive relationship with our charter school leadership, and the contracts are pretty straightforward, but we wanted to give you plenty of time, as required by state law, 15 days at least, for the board to review that information before you actually take action here at our next meeting. I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Any questions or comments from board members? Did I pronounce name right? That's okay. Any other questions, comments from board members? I don't see any. Dr. Pilch, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, finally, on our agenda tonight is our 2022-2023 budget year revisions, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that Board of Education of Will County School District Six approve the 2022-23 revised budget. This includes a total appropriation of 609,568,912. The transfer of funds from the general fund and the use of beginning fund balance were required as presented in the revised budget document.
Second. Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I imagine you do want to introduce this one, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. As you all are aware, we had time with you in the work session. Mr. Norwood was not able to be there, so if you have questions after Ms. Sponsler's presentation, you or anyone else, please feel free to ask those. This is that time of year where, by state law, we must bring to a revised budget. Ms. Sponsler will review again why that typically happens. It always happens in every school district. And with that, I'll pass it to our chief financial officer, Megan Sponsler. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening, board members. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss the revised budget for this current school year. As we talked about in the work session, this is common and actually part of state law that we bring this forward to you every January. The reason that we need to bring the revised budget forward is really because we have six months of data now collected, so we can measure where we are with our spending and our revenue. And we also know for sure that we have a certain number of students, as counted in the October count. We know our staff, that we have hired and what their salaries are going to be, and so this is our opportunity to reconcile all of those pieces of information. This year, we had a few changes to our budget beyond the typical changes, so I'm just going to quickly highlight a few of those. And again, we talked about this in the work session, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those questions. We had some projects in our Mill Levy override budget last year that we thought would happen last year that are now happening this year, in part due to supply chain issues, in part due to just delays in how things happen. And so that money is being carried forward from last year to this year, so this budget takes that into consideration. We've also got information about some of the funding that we get from CDE, what that looks like based on our actual numbers, and so that has been adjusted in this budget. And then really, beyond the student count, we have salaries and benefits that have been adjusted according to our actual staff at this point. There are a few other funds beyond the general fund with some changes. For example, the Colorado Preschool Program Fund, as you may be aware, the Colorado Preschool Program, as we know it, is disappearing, and it is going to be the Universal Preschool Program. We have been advised that that fund balance that we carry should be spent down as quickly as we can, and so we are working on that. Some purchases that we are planning to make are included in this revised budget. And then finally, our Capital Projects Fund, we have some projects that were started last school year and carried over to this school year, so we needed to adjust the budget to account for those projects. Those are really the highlights of the changes out of the usual changes that we would make, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for being here, Ms. Sponsler. We'll see if we have any questions, but I don't see any. As Dr. Pilch mentioned, we did get this report in our work session, and failing to see anybody else, I will just say once again, thank you for your excellent work. Thank you for your team. Thank you, Mandy Hydock, for your excellent work. We have such a great finance department, and we can't say it enough. And thank you for being here, but we need to vote, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote on this, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate your presence and your care for this school district. This meeting is adjourned.